That it causes a health, safety, or fire hazard, or attractive nuisance to children such as trees, weeds, or other vegetation which are dead, decayed, infested, diseased, or overgrown. On May 23rd, 2018, Case 18-1684 was initiated due to several large dead trees in the front and backyard of the property, as well as an extensive amount of step fuels on the ground, dried pine needles, dead grass, etc. A violation notification was mailed to the property owner on that date. Subsequent to initiating the case, the property owner contacted me and advised that her husband had recently had a stroke and, due to the medical issues involved, could not afford to have the trees removed. On November 1st, 2018, I mailed a letter to Ms. Burnett advising that I will likely take this case to the planning commission to get approval to abate the property, remove seven tall dead trees from the front and backyard of the property. I also stated that if this were to happen, a lien would be placed on the property for the cost involved, however, a special assessment would not be submitted which would affect the following year's property taxes. I requested that she contact me as soon as possible to discuss the issue. Ms. Burnett contacted me and advised that her husband passed away in June 2018 and had no life insurance. Any savings were spent while he was in the hospital, and now she currently lives only on social security. Contact was made with Mike's Tree Service in Ridgecrest requesting an estimate to remove all the dead trees from the property, both in the front and backyards. Based on the size and cleanup required, he estimated it to run around $3,500. On January 10th, 2019, I went to the property and spoke to Ms. Burnett. I advised her of the cost, which was similar to those estimates she received as well. I told Ms. Burnett I was going to take the case of the planning commission for approval to abate, remove the dead trees, and place a lien on the property, however, I would not place a special assessment toward the property tax, stating the lien would be paid when and if she sells the house. Ms. Burnett agreed with the plan, stating, as she is only on social security. However, what I learned today is that she did have the mortgage restructured, and she is able to make the mortgage payments, property tax, and insurance payments. So she will be in the house for a while. A clear inquiry regarding the property revealed the house was purchased August 25th, 2009, for $175,000, mortgage amount of $150,000 for 30 years. Property tax payments are current. That same date, a notice of pre-abatement public hearing to abate property letter was mailed to Ms. Burnett advising this case will be heard before the planning commission on February 26th at 6:00 PM. She also contacted her insurance company. I asked her to, to see if by chance they would be able to take down the trees, and they said the only way they would do anything is if a tree fell on the property and damaged it, then they would take it. They will not remove dead trees just sitting there. In any case, she did also agree that, you know, we did discuss the seven trees, and she does admit that they need to be taken down, she just couldn't afford it. Order of abatement to be conducted by the property owner, the complete removal of all dead trees in the front and backyard, as well as step fuels around the ground. That the abatement be completed or notification obtained by the code enforcement officer that the services of a contractor have been obtained and verified to do the abatement no later than March 10th, 2019.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Anything other, Heather? So, for our new commissioner, are you familiar with how he's described that at all?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's important to understand that the abatement that we're suggesting here is a lien against the property which would be satisfied at the point of sale someday. That way, it doesn't constitute a hardship to her where she's now on, you know, not having two social securities come in, but one. But it also eliminates the hazard. Now, we all have lived here probably long enough to see power poles break in half with some of the winds that we have coming over here, and I think we'd be extremely sad or disappointed if one of these trees fell over and hurt the neighbor or hurt her and caused other damage or problems. And so I think this is probably the very best outcome. So, Commissioner comments at all, or questions for staff?
Officer Booth, so, did you talk to her today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, did she say how much the loan balance is outstanding?
She didn't say that, but what she did say is that basically she owes more than what the house is worth currently.
Because I looked at the Zillow value of the house, it showed up like $200,000. So, if her mortgage is around $150,000 or $160,000, I mean, she won't, she had the loan payment made for almost 80 years, so the loan amount should have come down from $150,000 to maybe $140,000, something like that. There is enough equity in this house. So my second question is, when you talked to her today, did she still agree that we can go ahead and do the abatement and put lien on the house?
Yes, sir. She, all she asked was, is that whoever the contractor is, they call her so she can make arrangements, you know, to make sure that she, her dogs are out of the backyard, they can get access. She's very cooperative and understands why the trees need to come down.
Okay, so that's good. So, she didn't have any objection to that?
No, none at all.
That's great. Yeah, I mean, you did a good, you made a good decisions here. Instead of putting a special assessment tax, you wanted to go with a lien, which we are not causing any financial hardship on her at this point.
Correct.
So she understands that, right?
Yes. I said it on several occasions.
Any other questions from commission? Turn the time over to the public, if there's any questions from the public that, or comments that they would like to make. Not seeing anybody coming up to the mic. I would look for a motion for approval of the Planning Commission Resolution 19-01. Resolution, Planning Commission of the City of Ridgecrest confirm the findings of the code enforcement officer in ordering the property to be abated. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for abatement of the property located at 1127 North Randall Street, but I just want to add a comment because the legal description says it is 1129, so you may want to add that in the resolution also, also known as 1129, to avoid any complications.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'll make that correction. Do I have a second?
A second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Roger Ottenham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Mackey?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, part of our public hearing process, we have on our schedule a tentative parcel map, 1, 2, 3, 2, 5. Staff is requesting that we table this and move it to next month's agenda. Continue it.
So it'll be continued to March 26th?
Do we need to vote on this?
Nope.
Okay. And then moving on to the other item of the tentative tract map, as you see, item was removed from the agenda. It'll be on next month's program as well, and this was removed as request of the owners. So, moving on down, Commissioner, items and comments. I'm gonna get you home for supper. Any particular, let's start with committee reports. Mr. Mackey, did you attend any committees this last month?
Yes, I did.
And what were they, and what did you discuss?
Economic development and discussed various things I just don't quite.
And that's fine.
We discussed the ICSU show for this year. We discussed high-speed Wi-Fi that could be coming to the valley, and that is about it.
So, one of the things you can do as you go through this process?
Yeah.
Is if you've got another commissioner that's part of that, you can always defer and say, "What did we talk about?" I don't remember the particulars, and you can kind of draw on each other, it's not like you have to come up with everything.
Yeah.
Because it's more of a report so that we know what's coming forward than anything else.
Yeah, I heard about, probably about 20 different acronyms that night, so it's really hard to keep up with.
Yeah. Okay. Solomon?
CTR did not meet.
Okay. I attended the infrastructure committee meeting. We talked about the plans with the Navy and the new sewer plant. We talked about roads, the paving machine, how we determine which one's more important than other, which one the machine will save and which one won't. A lot of time on that, but more of it was, most of our time was spent on reports. No action was taken. Commissioner comments? Mr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. Ferris?
Just wanted to thank Officer Booth for his compassion in dealing with this abatement issue. I think that this was the least impactful to this homeowner, and I really appreciate him going the extra mile to make sure that she was okay with this decision.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Roger Ottenham?
Just want to make an announcement. Economic Outlook Conference is on the 28th of this month, day after tomorrow, so it would be informative, so it would be good for the planning commissioners to attend, so tickets are available at the chamber office. So that's one thing. And Heather, you sent an email about attending some conference for the planners. Is anybody going for that?
It was full.
Unfortunately, it was sold out.
Was it?
Yeah, it was. So, next time.
Okay, great, thank you.
I also would like to thank Officer Booth. I'd also like the rest of this to, you know, thank the rest of the city staff for our manager, for his willingness to work, because that's, ends up being a vegetarian problem for police department, because that has to be paid for somehow, and then we receive it down the road. So, I think there were a number of players involved here, other than the face of Officer Booth, which we appreciate much. Did you have an announcement? No, I'm just kidding.
Not yet.
I do have one.
Okay.
Not an announcement, just for the benefit of Mayor Breeden, we approved abatement, so you are late on that.
We're just getting ready to dismiss. Do you want me to go back to public comment? You can. So, anyway, I'm very thankful for the staff and the city employees that have made that extra effort. Heather, do we have any future agenda items?
Next month, you'll see, in addition to the ones that we continued tonight, you'll see a couple more extensions. We are working on the Oasis project with the consultant planners, so you'll see that in the next couple months.
What is Oasis?
That is the map that will be next to the bowling alley, China Lake.
South of the bowling alley.
Yeah.
Would you do one thing for me on the tentative tract map, 6, 6, 7, 9? Okay, so, if you'll remember, a year ago, little over a year ago, we heard this same extension, and the discussion came up, why should we continue to do the extensions if no work is being done? And they, and for Mr. Mackey's benefit, during the mid to late 80s, because the economic turn down, the state granted an extension, an automatic waiver to these tract maps because they just couldn't afford to develop them. And about 10 or 11, you know, I think it was a four-year extension, those expired, so they've received several extensions going down the road. So, what I would like, in part of this staff presentation, rather than a blanket, we recommend approval, is what have they done in the last year? Because he promised us, if we go back and look at that, that something would have been done in the next year.
Is that that map, or the map that they appealed that was with that one?
I don't know. I just would like to know what's been done since we approved that one last time. You know, it's important for us to understand that that's just not a rubber stamp. They come back to us and want us to extend, but if they're not doing anything on it, unless they have a really good reason, I am less likely to personally want to extend it time and time and time and time again.
Well, the MAP Act does allow for them to have six extensions.
Right.
So, although the assembly, and that's on top of the assembly bills, so the MAP Act does say.
On this one here, when you went through the staff report, which started in 2006, I think they've already had them.
No, because it doesn't include the assembly bills, that's on top of.
Okay.
So all those assembly bills don't count for the six that the city can grant.
Anyway, I'd like to know where they're at and what's their, you know, where they're going with it.
Okay.
You know, as part of that decision process. Okay, so, moving on, staff items, presentation from Lauren. Lauren, when you're coming up here, did we discuss anything else in infrastructure other than roads and sewer, that you remember?
We spoke a little bit.
About solar lighting?
Oh, yeah, solar lighting, that's correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you to take a look at what all we have going on in public works. If you so desire, I can continue, or if you want me to wait for Commissioner DeHaan, I can defer this to the next meeting.
We went back two years.
You put 2017, February 26, 2017.
That, yeah, looks like we got a wrong date there, but, yeah, so that's a good catch.
Well, I'm younger.
So if you so desire, I can continue, or if you'd like to have Commissioner DeHaan present, I can.
Tell me what, a broad view of what the information is.
Well, it's to go over the public works projects, the grant projects that we have, what the Public Works Director has planned for street work. We wanted to also announce that we've got, the Public Works Director's done a great job in putting together a dashboard on the city website to keep you appraised of projects, where they're at, and just a schedule of how things are moving along for our city projects.
So I would suggest go ahead, only because she'll hear this in infrastructure?
Okay, sure.
Or she's been hearing this about roads, and she's part of that decision process?
Yes, I don't believe the Public Works Director gave a presentation at the infrastructure. This presentation was presented to the city council.
Okay.
At the last council meeting.
Is it gonna go to committee at all?
Oh, we can.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking, would it? If it's not, then yeah, let's wait.
Well, I think it's appropriate, yes.
So if you're gonna take it to infrastructure, she will be there to infrastructure?
Okay.
And I'm not sure that I would hold it up for that, because that way you could present it next time to infrastructure if you wanted to.
Very well.
But I'll put it to the commission. Do we want to hold? She's very likely gonna hear this in infrastructure, and so.
You can add it to the address.
Yeah, I'd say let's hear it.
Okay, very well. I'll try to make this short and sweet for you, I won't bore you with details here, but we'll go through the program here. The first thing the Public Works Director had in this presentation were streets and roads. And the first one we have is our ADA access improvements. We were trying to get our Ridgecrest Boulevard, all the driveways up to ADA standards, and we went out in 2018, and the beds were too high, so we're bringing it back this spring. You can see by that slide there, that's what the ADA ramp should look like for driveways. I think we got a, no, I didn't put another slide on the way they look currently, but anyway, we're gonna get all the driveways along Ridgecrest Boulevard between Norma and China Lake Boulevard to make those compliant, so we'll have a complete ADA path of travel on our sidewalks.
And this is a grant, is it not?
Yes, it's a CDBG grant.
Okay.
That we're dealing with there. Our Sunland paving project, this is a CMAC project, we have awarded the project to Griffith Construction. We're gonna start it this spring. I think our, I think we've scheduled our pre-construction meeting on March 6th, but this stretch of roadway is between Bowman and Dolphin, and that'll be two paved lanes with four-foot shoulders and borrowed ditches on the other side. Next project is the east side of Downs. Again, went to bid, the successful bidder was Griffith Construction. The project has been awarded, and again, we're gonna start this in spring as well. We're kind of waiting for the weather to get a little better for construction season, closer to a little better paving season, so we'll be seeing that one start as well.
Wind or temperature?
Yeah, wind and temperature. The west side of Downs project, our widening, we've begun the environmental compliance process. We're anticipating out to bid in November. We have a proposal before city council to award a contract for a easement acquisition firm to take care of the easements that Southern California Edison requires for the poles to be relocated. Of course, we've paid everything for the pole relocations. All we're waiting on now is to obtain the right-of-way or easements for the pole overhang, the conductor overhang, and off we go. Southern California Edison will begin the pole relocations, and we'll do our widening of Down Street.
Let me ask you a question before you move that slide. This pole that you're seeing in the lower portion, my understanding that the moving of that was going to be paid by the apartments, is that true? Wasn't that part of their condition, that that would be moved, when and if that ever happened?
It was a part of their condition to relocate that pole, and, but Southern California Edison has indicated that we can't accept any kind of donation for the relocation of that pole by a private developer as it affects the, I think it's the ITC tax. There's some sort of tax that would have to be applied for that pole to be, for any kind of funds that the city would receive for that relocation of that pole. But yes, originally, in the conditions of approval, the developer was required to relocate that pole, as well as the next two poles that you see in the background.
Okay. And on the upper slide, has the Down Guy pole been removed on the east side?
The pole remains. We're currently trying to get Southern California Edison to relocate that pole right now. We've paid for that pole to be relocated, and there's no easements necessary for it. And once that pole gets relocated to its position, if you see the next pole in the foreground, the, once that pole is aligned with that other pole, there will be no need for the Guy pole on the opposite side of the roadway.
Right.
And we're asking Southern California Edison right now to go ahead and take that pole out, since we've already paid for it, and there's no easement necessary. And there's a license agreement right now that we have with Southern California Edison for the right-of-way that we acquired along their frontage, and if that pole goes away, then the license agreement expires, and the right-of-way's ours.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is school crosswalk improvements. We have seven crosswalks in our, in our project, where the crosswalks are gonna be upgraded to the ladder style with the diamonds in the, as you approach each of the crosswalks. Each of the crosswalks will also have rapid flashing beacons that will alert motorists as they approach those crosswalks. We've, this is a HSIP project, so it's 100% funded by federal grant. These, we are out to bid, and we had a pre-bid meeting today on the project, and we'll be opening bids on March 7th. We hope to have this awarded on the March 20th council meeting. That's a look at some of the crosswalks. I believe that's at Lost Flores. And that one is on Drummond, crossing the street to the Christian School along Drummond. Our Bowman and Downs intersection improvements is also on HSIP, 100% funded by the federal government. This project also, we had our pre-bid meeting today, bid opening on March 7th, and hopefully award on March 20th city council meeting. We have a system safety analysis program. Again, this is an HSIP. There was $75,000 awarded to us to do a citywide study to determine what sort of safety improvements might be able to be made within the city. That document will be the basis for future grant applications for other HSIP projects. One element of this is a speed study, speed survey, which allows the police department to use the radar to be able to issue citations. There's also gonna be stop sign warrants reviewed, and reports, of course, on safety needs throughout the city. So, we've completed the speed study survey. PD has had an opportunity to review it. We've made some modifications to some of the speeds that were suggested by the consultant, and so we should have that completed. We're hoping to have the speed study before city council for its adoption on the March 20th city council meeting. This is Dolphin Project. This is a, again, a CMAC project. We have awarded a design, a design contract to Quadernoff, or QK as they're now known, for the design work. The service. And once that pole gets relocated to its position, if you see the next pole in the foreground, the, once that pole is aligned with that other pole, there will be no need for the Guy pole on the opposite side of the roadway.
Right.
And we're asking Southern California Edison right now to go ahead and take that pole out since we've already paid for it and there's no easement necessary. And there's a license agreement right now that we have with Southern California Edison for the right-of-way that we acquired along their frontage. And if that pole goes away, then the license agreement expires and the right-of-way is ours.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is school crosswalk improvements. We have seven crosswalks in our, in our project where the crosswalks are gonna be upgraded to the ladder style with the diamonds in the, as you approach each of the crosswalks. Each of the crosswalks will also have rapid flashing beacons that will alert motorists as they approach those crosswalks. We've, this is a HSIP project, so it's a hundred percent funded by federal grant. These, we are out to bid and we had a pre-bid meeting today on the project and we'll be opening bids on March seventh. We hope to have this awarded on the March twentieth council meeting. That's a look at some of the crosswalks. I believe that's at Lost Flores. And that one is on Drummond, crossing the street to the Christian School along Drummond. Our Bowman and Downs intersection improvements is also on HSIP, a hundred percent funded by the federal government. This project also, we had our pre-bid meeting today, bid opening on March seventh and hopefully award on March twentieth city council meeting. We have a system safety analysis program. Again, this is an HSIP. There is seventy-five thousand dollars awarded to us to do a citywide study to determine what sort of safety improvements might be able to be made within the city. That document will be the basis for future grant applications for other HSIP projects. One element of this is a speed study, speed survey, which allows the Police Department to use the radar to be able to issue citations. There's also gonna be stop sign warrants reviewed and reports, of course, on safety needs with, throughout the city. So we've completed the speed study survey. PD has had an opportunity to review it. We've made some modifications to some of the speeds that were suggested by the consultant. And so we should have that completed. We're hoping to have the speed study before City Council for its adoption on the March twentieth city council meeting. This is Dolphin project. This is a, again, a CMAC project. We have awarded a design, a design contract to Quadnoff, or QK as they're now known, for the design work. The survey work is scheduled to start on March sixth. We're hoping to have this out in fall. And this particular reach runs from the, almost to College Heights Boulevard, all the way out to China Lake Boulevard. So this is, this is, this again will be a two-lane asphalt roadway with four-foot shoulders and, and borrowed ditches on the other side.
Wait, wait a minute. I thought Dolphin ran east and west.
Dolphin is an east-west, yes. It does run, well, it runs between College Heights.
County, I thought it was paved out, paved out the county road. Aren't you thinking about this one going up to College Heights, which is?
Yeah, it's between College Heights and China Lake Boulevard, South China Lake Boulevard is the reach. There's a, the project, it's a residential track that's on the corner of Dolphin and, and, and College Heights. And there's half-street paving there, just off of College Heights. And this project will take off from that existing half-street paving and continue all the way to South China Lake Boulevard. Tamarisk is another CMAC project. This is between North Enio and, I see Downs, North Downs. And you can see that there's half-width paving there. The street's in pretty poor condition. We've coordinated with the developer. Indian Wells Valley Construction is building that track that you see on the vacant land there in the photograph. He's gonna go ahead and install his utilities and put in his curb gutters and sidewalks, which will allow us to put in the paving to match up to his curb gutter improvements. So, and again, this is a CMAC project and we're hoping to get the design started. We've got RFP out right now for, for environmental and preliminary engineering services for the design. Of course, you all know that we purchased a story machine. Public Works Director says that we're gonna get some training in April. Apparently, they're gonna give us a loner vehicle for spring to practice on. We're, we're gonna try our first practice run in the city parking lots. Then we're gonna be prepared to get into full operation by fall of twenty eighteen. The new machine, according to the Public Works Director, arrives in May or June.
How much does this cost?
It was on the order of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I believe, somewhere in that neighborhood. I might have that number incorrect. I didn't have it committed to memory, but I do recall it's in the four hundred-plus range. So, but I'm, I'm not absolutely certain of the detail and the exact dollar amount. Wastewater, we've got a proposal from an engineering firm, Willdan Engineering, to do analysis further on our Phase Two for our, Phase Two for sewer line evaluation and, and construction project. As you know, our Phase One, we did Church Street and we did repairs throughout the older part of town, the original assessment district area. So Phase Two, we're launching and we'll be starting that as soon as we award. We're anticipating that award to also be on the March twentieth city council agenda. This particular slide is our Bowman and Downs sewer line. This was a part of our Phase Two project. The, the wastewater superintendent had a problem with this particular reach of sewer and needed this reach replaced. And of course, we needed it done before we did our Bowman and Downs intersection improvements. So this has been completed. We're awaiting better weather to do the final trench or surface restoration. But very pleased with the outcome and, and we've accomplished one of the, one of the priorities that the wastewater superintendent wanted to get done in Phase Two. Then this is our Phase Two slide, but we're working with Willdan to get this Phase Two started. What that entails is looking at the trunk line that's in, in China Lake Boulevard and California Street. We're a little concerned with the hydrogen sulfide attack on our manholes and also want to make sure that our sewer trunk line is, is still intact and in shape. That there's, no major repairs have to be done. And that was the second priority the wastewater superintendent wanted to do. Another phase, another portion of this work is gonna be evaluating the other remaining grade four and grade five defects in our sewer lines. And that'll be citywide. So we'll be, it'd be getting a report for a program for the repairs on those remaining grade four and grade five defects on our citywide sewer system. New plant, I guess the lease negotiations are close to completion and new operations agreement are just starting. And let's see, oh, this is, this is really neat. This is what the Public Works Director, Bard Lauer, put together. This is that dashboard I was telling you about. And up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the path to get there. That's the link. But that'll give you an idea of what's out there, what's being worked on, what the status is. And it's a, it's a real good way to kind of keep track of what your public works is, is working upon. Any questions?
Not on these, but can I ask something else?
Yes.
We have approved some apartment complexes. Anything moving on Sunland project?
Oh, yes. You know, the private sector is, 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 well, in the nine years that I've been here, I have not seen as many submittals for new projects as I have in this last, I'm gonna say these last five months. We have projects for the Sunland apartment complex. We're currently in plan check on the grading plans. We're currently in plan check for the street improvement plans. Those are looking really good. It looks like that those are gonna be approved here within this first week of March. We've got, of course, the Red Rocks project. That was the map that was, we, we extended there. They're currently in design on the street improvements. We haven't seen the grading plan yet, but we don't anticipate any problems there. We've got the hotel, the Holiday Inn Express, that we're currently in plan check. We're looking at the grading plans for that. That's looking very good.
How about the homeward suites?
We've got a, well, there's some land sale. I believe it's lot fif, parcel fifteen in the business part behind the Taco Bell. Now, there's, that sale has not been completed. I believe that is still in escrow. But we're answering some questions that they had regarding that development. We have numerous tracks that have been submitted. You're gonna be seeing three new tentative track maps. You're gonna be seeing a new parcel map for the Oasis project. Oasis Project has submitted a grading plan as well as a site plan. So you'll be seeing both a parcel map as well as a site plan for the Oasis project. So we've got three new track maps. You've got four par, track extensions you're looking at. And we've got plans currently for second phases of development within Track sixty-nine oh eight, which is the track, truck, Ruland is working on along Drum, along Drummond there. And Chuck is also working on Phase Two of, or I should say, Unit B of his seventy-one eighty-eight that's on Mahan and Drummond. So we're seeing a tremendous inflow of, of, of projects right now. And I might also mention, it's my understanding that the Arby's project is still moving. The plans, they've submitted plans on that, that's been in plan check now with the county. So apparently, that project is, is still moving along. I don't have details, but I understand that they do have plans.
Where did they decide to land?
I'm sorry?
Where did they decide to land? Because you're saying that county.
It's the same project location, the Indian Restaurant.
Right.
That project or that location currently has plans in plan check for doing the renovation and apparently it is still for the relocation of Arby's.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's, that's about all I can tell you. But I was surprised. I, I thought I had not heard anything of them for quite some time and, and I just recently heard that they are, are in plan check, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Any other questions from Commissioners? So we need to close the public hearings that we had earlier, so we'll close it now at six forty. And if there's no other items, I will also close the Planning Commission meeting this evening at six forty-one.